The March tenth, twenty twenty five Ohio County Board of Education meeting. I called it ordered at six P M. Today is where I sort of pledge allegiance to the flag. Congratulations.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to the packed house. Mr. Miller.
It's wonderful.
Why don't you give them some information or your superintendent's information, please?
Well, I'd like to start off by thanking everybody for taking the time on this really, really beautiful sunny day. We finally get a sunny day and you're here with us. So, um, thank you. We certainly appreciate having you all here. Um, I'd like to start off by letting the board know that we are in C I A season. So our students, um, grades three through eight are working very, very hard on their C I As. And our teachers, our administrative staff, central office staff are working very hard of analyzing that data so they can isolate skills and help those children, whether it be in a full group instruction, a small group instruction, or one-on-one instruction to hit those deficit skills so our children are most prepared. Again, they'll be taking the G S A in the, um, spring and that is it. That is a summative test that covers all the standards those students should be exposed to over that grade level. So it's very important to us that our children are prepared and they feel confident and they're ready to do their best work so that we can continue to meet them where they are and take them to the next level. So again, we appreciate the work that our teachers, interventionists are doing with our students, especially now. It's almost like our, um, our Super Bowl season. We're getting ready. So certainly thank you. And thank you, our kiddos, for working so hard. Are any of you starting the C I A that are in our room today? We have lots of students. Seriously, come on. We know you're doing it. It's happening. Also want to take just a short moment to thank, um, the news register for the commentary that was in the newspaper on, uh, in the Sunday, Saturday, Sunday paper, the commentating on providing tools to oversee, um, homeschool students. It's the compulsory attendance eighteen dash eight dash one, as well as the editorial comment, um, column that was put in the paper. And as a public school system, we oversee those homeschool kiddos and we want to ensure safety for all of our kids and prevent any future tragedies. So we just want to have oversight at each grade level, um, once a year. Not that we want to interfere with the work that they're doing, but certainly want to provide that oversight. So thank you, Jocelyn, John McCabe, uh, James Banner and others who made that happen. We really appreciate it. Um, finally, um, wanted to let the board know that on March eighteenth, we will have our next parent advisory meeting. We'll be talking about, um, items as attendance, testing, and, um, anything else that our parents want to bring up and discuss. And we certainly appreciate them and their input. And that's all I have right now.
Any questions for Dr. Miller? I know that you're passionate about something when you're reciting the West Virginia State Cup.
I know. Oh, great thing.
Sort of official.
After nine here.
Want to make sure, Molly, you want to pick us off?
Sure. Uh, first of all, welcome everyone who's here tonight. It is nice to have a full house. It's usually, uh, there are usually fewer people here. So the parade of champions evenings are a lot of fun for us as a board to be able to see our kids, more schools system come in and be recognized. So welcome to everyone. Um, I know we're going to celebrate the young writers and the hockey team. So I look forward to hearing about them. And I just wanted to highlight, uh, we had a couple of state champion, uh, state champion runner-up wrestlers from this past weekend. Congratulate. Uh, Jameson Maynard is the state champ, Malachi Washington is the state runner-up, and Jack Delo is the state runner-up. And then also, um, because we had two girls, um, play at the girls wrestling, Western University Wrestling State Tournament, um, the first time in Wheeling Park history. So that's Kimber Haldrit and Teriyana Givens. So congratulations to them.
Thank you, Molly.
Uh, I'd like to say also add to that, that's, uh, part of what I was going to talk about too. But I also want to add that, well, we're looking at next year's school calendar. And maybe, you know, the, as far as students and parents, we want to get your students involved. Ohio County offers so many things out there, uh, clear down to crocheting, writing, singing, steel drums, uh, band, football, you know, all the sports we have. We even have archery, bowling. There's so much out there that a high county school offers. Get your students involved, your children. We need them and, uh, we're here for them. We want to help in any way that we can. Uh, bring your students to high county schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Croft. Uh, unlike last week, I'll be brief this week. Uh, two things. First of all, I got to go to Warwick School, uh, last week and read to the third grader. Did an awesome job with Dr. Seuss. He's one of my favorites. That's always good to get, be able to go back into the classroom. I enjoy that. And secondly, thank you, Mr. Croft, for allowing me to go to, uh, to the mall to celebrate our hockey team's, uh, state title. What really kind of shocked me was they received ten thousand dollars from Gaffaro Industries and, and Mr. Bell is in charge of that. And turns out that's just perfect because they will be attending, um, nationals and the nationals are in California. So they'll be able to use that ten thousand dollars towards their trip where that's a, that's a lot of Dairy Queens. So I'm glad to see that they're going to be using that in a good way. I, I don't know, educate me please, have we ever had anybody in a national competition like this before? I don't recall.
Our robotic scenes.
Our robotic scenes were in the national?
That was the world.
That was, oh, yeah, only the world. Okay, I got you. But, uh, what's really cool is our kids are going to be participating in a national contest, which I think is outstanding. And when you see the kids, one of the cool things, when I was following them online, I saw all these blondes and I kept saying, geez, what's Coach doing? Recruiting Scandinavia? Where did all these kids come from? So when I was up there the other day, I asked the one fellow, I said, why do you, why do you guys all have blonde hair? He said, it's a sign of unity. And that speaks a lot to their character. I think that's pretty cool that they all dyed their, not all of them, a majority of them dyed their hair blonde uh, to show their unity, uh, to get the state title. I think that's pretty cool. So congratulations to our hockey team and we're going to be recognizing them soon. Thank you.
Thanks. Bernie, I'm a lot dying my hair. Yeah, I had the wrestling, uh, you know, the winner on, on the, uh, on my list as well. That's great. And then young writers, I mean, somebody daughter was one of the young writers. Somebody's just too, uh, it's kind of fun to watch the young writers go through the world. You guys are, uh, it, it's a good thing. They'll do great changes in life. So it's very good, one of the young writers. So congratulations. That's, that's it.
Thank you, Bernie. I just have two things. One is I've had a couple of bus drivers approach me just about a compensation issue. And I will discuss it later today, but what is meaningful to me and the rest of this board is that we're here for the community. We're, we're just your stewards. So if you have issues or questions and things we can address, there's not a person on this board that wouldn't be glad to talk to anybody in the community who can try to resolve those. So, you know, please keep those communication lines open. And secondly, Molly and I happened to attend a week and a half ago, the gun tree, uh, business after hours. And they are really looking forward to getting to know our archery program. Uh, it's an incredible facility. If I were to predict something, that's going to be some of the best food at the Highlands. Because the gentleman there, Scott Yanko, used to, uh, own the Belmont Brew Works. And so very creative, great cook. And they have a full kitchen. It's amazing. Serve cafeteria style, but it's going to be incredible. So really looking forward to, uh, country becoming part of our community. All right, the highlight of our day is going to be the parade of champions. So item four, we'll kick it off with the Wheeling Park High School Hockey Team.
Well, we're pretty tight today.
Let somebody check somebody. Get out of the way.
Parents, take his photos. Why don't you come behind us so you can get a better photo? Just have to be careful. Chairs sometimes get back.
Good evening, Dr. Miller, uh, board. Thank you for having us. These are always the most fun. Uh, state championships are an amazing experience for our student athletes, something that they'll get to carry with themselves, um, for all their lives. So thank you for having us this evening. Uh, very excited for them, um, as well as their upcoming trip. Um, close with several of these kids and they are psyched about going to California for the national tournament. Uh, something I heard the other day that I wasn't aware of is our last state championship. Our coach was actually one of the players, which I never had that, I was never that blessed to be able to play the state championship and coach in one and win them both. Uh, so I, I'm just, I thought that was so cool. So I'm going to turn it over to Coach Marcus Black.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to say thank you for the recognition, Dr. Miller. It's, it's, it's a special honor to, um, represent the county Wheeling Park High School and the state at a national level. And today I wanted to kind of bring light not only their athletic accomplishments. Um, here we have six players that have higher than a four point six GPA, eight players that have higher than a four point O GPA, and three more that have higher than a three point five GPA. So not only their athletic accomplishments are very, very special, but their work in the classroom is unbelievable. Yeah, that's, that's really on.
Do you guys have any questions? Seniors, anything? They're out there? No?
How many seniors do we have here?
Raise your hand, seniors.
Let's do it again next year then, right?
So I've got a question for the players today. At West Bank Arena, how was the ice this year?
Pretty good.
Yeah, because that's a fairly new system that we put in there versus what we had before. Um, I'm curious on how it's actually played. So if you found it hard enough ice and it was good, good surface?
Yeah, it feels, that's on the line.
Well, that's what we were hoping. Uh, so congratulations, guys. Job really well done.
Yeah, congrats. I know the state championship is hard to come by. Like Mrs. Taylor mentioned, there's a lot of opportunity out there and you, you think you're going to get it and then you sometimes fall short. But, um, it's a special thing to actually achieve it. So congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
Moving on to twenty twenty-five Young Writers Contest.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for attending tonight. My name is Karen Hughes. And I'm the Director of Public Relations for Ohio County Schools. Young writers since nineteen eighty-four have celebrated just what it sounds like, young writers throughout our season. One of the most amazing things about the young writers competition is there are very few parameters. You have the ability to write however you feel. You have the ability to pick the category that speaks to you as a writer and really let your words flow. We read some amazing essays this year and we're thrilled to recognize this year's winners. I am going to announce everyone, we do have some absences, so I'll set those certificates aside. But when I say your name, I ask that you come up, get your certificate, and then we will all do a group photo in front of the Ohio County Schools logo at the end. So our first place in the first and second grade division is from Woodstow Elementary School, teacher Martha Bousak, and that is Mercer Matarcoski. Mercer could not be with us today. Our first place in our third and fourth grade division, teacher Heidi Homann, school Steerata Elementary, Miss Josie Dewey. Josie's essay was called "A Christmas Tragedy." Second place from Middle Creek Elementary, teacher Stephanie Crowe, is Miss Emily Marshall. Emily wrote "Raccoon on the Run." And third place in our third and fourth grade division, teacher Heidi Homann, Miss Bailey Gilbert. She wrote a great informational piece on why is Sacagawea a great heart? Now to our fifth and sixth grade division, our first place winner is sick today, but she is from Ridge Street Middle School. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Campbell, her teacher, come up to accept her certificate. That is Harley Shaper. She wrote "The Golden Eye." It's like the Oscar. She's accepting on her. Second place from Trielpia, teacher Diana Tucker, is Miss Violet Kessler. Violet wrote "The Disastrous Hike." And third place, also from Trielpia, under Diana Tucker, writing "Call Her Bone Catastrophe," is Miss Sydney Grubler. Our upper middle school division at seventh and eighth grade, she could not be here tonight, but first place from Wheeling Middle School, teacher Matthew Fusal, is Miss Josie Paree. And she wrote "It's Okay to Feel Jealous." Second place from Trielpia Middle School, teacher Carly Seals, Miss Adeline Hildreth. She wrote a beautiful essay entitled "My Hero." And then our third place winner, also from Trielpia, teacher Carly Seals, we have Miss Molly Brammer. Molly wrote an awesome dystopian piece called "The Agency." Molly, would you call it dystopian? I call it dystopian vibe. Yeah, it was awesome. Our ninth and tenth grade division, our first place, teacher Jordan Shreve, entitled "Brief, It's a Funny Thing," Miss Addie Carroll. Second place, teacher Shannon Conley, titled "False Hope," Miss Beverly Dutton. Third place, teacher Shannon Conley, a title "A Train Called Time," Mr. Ronan Maxwell. Our eleventh and twelfth grade division, our first place winner, teacher Tracy Moska, "Failure is Okay," and that is attributed to Miss Alyssa Pollard. Second place, teacher Tracy Moska, titled "Trouble Waters, Matt Cox." And third place, teacher Tracy Moska, "Devil's Last Day," Mr. Connor Annett. I'd like to give one more round of applause to all of our young writers and the teachers and grownups that have influenced them along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations, everyone. Keep writing.
How are you?
Good. How's your mom?
Sorry, said a lot.
I'm going to read it tomorrow. I'm excited.
Well, you beat my hero.
Just like that, everybody's gone.
Just us.
There we are. Just us.
All right, let's move on. Personnel, Dr. Miller.
Yes, sir. We would like to, woo, we'd like to congratulate our professional staff for their upgrading degree status. Beginning with Samantha Gentle, from a master's to a master's plus fifteen, Lexi Crya, Crya, from a bachelor's to a master's degree, and Brandy Moore from a bachelor's to a bachelor's plus fifteen. Um, also like to welcome Jennifer Sykes, being recommended for our positions of two sixty-one day custodian handyman to flexible work, um, flexible work weekends assigned to Wheeling Park High School. Um, all other personnel as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Any questions for Dr. Miller on the personnel issues?
Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting her recommendations as presented may have a motion. I have a motion for Bernie. I have a second.
I second.
I got a second. And any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Um, item six on our agenda, school safety, Mr. Jones.
Uh, just one thing. We'll be having our countywide safety committee meeting, uh, Wednesday morning. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Bennet, I thought you'd be wearing black today. Do you want to tell us about assessed property values and how lucky we're not some of the other counties?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Um, no, just to, this is just to provide an update to the board. There's not a whole lot of detail that's going to go along with it. But, um, it's, it was pertinent information to get out to you now rather than at the next meeting. Um, our property values, our property, uh, the assessed property values in Ohio County were received by the Board of Education and the State Department, um, last week. The property values went down about four hundred and seventy-five million dollars within the county. That, I talked to Miss Hoffman, the, uh, the assessor. Um, she explained to me is the way they were evaluating, um, the gas and oil wells and vehicules now. Um, what that's going to do to our budget is that it's going to decrease our tax revenue next year, um, ru- roughly eight point eight million dollars. So that's going to be an eight point eight million dollar cut. Um, and it's, you know, it's, it's going to, it's going to take some work on our end. Um, the, the current year, um, is, we have budgeted for forty-six point nine million dollars between the regular and excess levy next year. If we keep the excess levy rates the same at the next meeting, it would be roughly thirty-eight million dollars for next year. So, um, it will be a drastic cut. Uh, our, our state aid will go up, um, as a result because state aid factors in, they reduce your state aid by eighty-five percent of your regular levies. So when your regular levy goes down, your state aid will go up. Um, and, you know, we, I have an estimate as to what it will go up. I'm, I'm estimating, and again, all, all of these numbers are estimates right now, but they're just big estimates. So I, I felt the, the need to get it out to there to you now. Um, you know, I'm, I'm estimating our budget to go down roughly six to seven million dollars right now for next year. But again, I've got other numbers that still have to come in. Um, our P E I revenue, our, um, our state aid, the official state aid and, uh, retirement revenue all have to come in yet. Federal funding has to come in yet. So we're still waiting on all, all of those numbers. Those are all pieces nearby. Um, the, the timeline is at the next meeting, the board will vote on a proposed levy rate. The third Tuesday in April, um, will be the final vote for the excess levy rate. Uh, and then at the end of May is when we need to approve a budget. So we'll be working on that information in the meantime.
You're at about eight percent?
Yes.
Well, we'll see when the numbers are finalized. I know there were some anomalies. I had an opportunity to talk to Commissioner Nickerson. Um, you know, it seems to be heavily into personal property side, you know, for some reason vehicles have taken a hit. So I think that's being looked at a little more closely from our assessor's perspective. And I think we'll get the final numbers that hopefully aren't as dreary, but we'll make do with what we have, we have to.
And to your point earlier, uh, Miss Hoffman made the comment, she's happy that we are down billions of dollars versus billions of dollars like some of our fellow counties from the state.
Yeah, directly to our south. Um, so, and, and that also partly attributable to oil and gas valuations. Uh, the state actually changed to, it's called a, um, it's, it's a yield analysis on what the actual, uh, wells are yielding. Uh, so it's a, it's a, it's a very mechanical model that they developed and it wasn't rolled out just right. And so there was some confusion and I think some of the actual property values decreased because they weren't properly assessed. And those aren't assessed by our local assessors at some of the state. So any questions for Mr. Bennet on the assessed property values? Yeah, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, Anne, any clue what federal money is going to look like?
No. I, I don't know. Yeah, that, that's, that's kind of the big one that we're going on. Um, the, the State Department put out that any changes can really take a couple of years.
Okay.
They're not necessarily anticipating any changes right now, but I mean, it's very much a fluid situation. So I, I, I can, what I say now may not be true in the future. So, thank you.
My question, uh, Mr. President and Steve, uh, was concerning the vehicles. Is, is what happened because we are now taxing our, our vehicles differently? Is that, is that part of the issue?
I, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that's a, that's a Miss Hoffman question rather. Um, you know, I, I know that it really shouldn't be. It shouldn't be because maybe not what you're thinking because I know when you, now you can deduct it off of your tax. You still have to pay a front, which is then coming to Ohio County Schools and Ohio, the county and city. And, um, I, I don't think that that's it. But again, that's a sort of Miss Hoffman question.
So Paulie confessed that if we were able to, as we receive information from, um, the Department of Education and our federal programs, as we receive that information, we're certainly sure that we don't want to give misinformation.
Right. And, and so it, those are two separate issues, you know, on the tax credit. Right. On the taxation of it itself and Miss Hoffman, I think they're just looking at that. But the nice thing is if the oil and gas, if it's a yield capitalization model, if that's properly implemented, then they bounce back, you know, for the oil and gas side of it. So, you know, we'll see. I'm hoping it's just a dip and that next year we recover, but, um, we, we can't base our budget on hoping what next year might be. So we're just going to have to take a hard look at it. So, uh, but we'll keep it on the agenda as, you know, so that we're all up, up to speed and we can properly have the right mindset as we budget.
Everything is just speculation right now, correct?
Well, I mean, their numbers are down. I mean, she, she's given us numbers, but they're not the final numbers. So there is the ability to go back and look at some, you know, maybe it's a class three property that they're looking at and saying, look, that, that's off. Let's take a second look at this. Maybe there's, um, you know, if, if we were lucky, it would be a clerical error or something where you, a digit, say, ah, there it is. So I wouldn't hold my breath because they're pretty darn good, but hopefully, um, the numbers, I, I think the numbers when they first came out caused some sleepless nights for Steve. Um, but, uh, they've, they've rebounded a little bit. And I think, um, at the end of the day, it's not going to be catastrophic, but it's going to be painful.
If, if it'll be a takedown or a bough here, uh, and, and that's okay. I mean, we, we, we've been preparing for this. I, I think that's another point that I'd like to make is that, I mean, the, the state's been telling us for years that those counties that have gas and oil money, be prepared for it to go now. So it's something that I, I know, Dr. Miller and I, we've worked to make sure that we are prepared for, for this when the time came. Um, you know, I, the initial number that came out was bigger than eight million. It was somewhere around ten and a half. It was somewhere around ten and a half. So, uh, you know, that, that was a little concerning because we, I don't want to say that we were, we would still be okay, but that was larger than what we expected. But, um, we've been preparing, so, you know, this is, I, like Mr. Croft said, we're hoping it's a dip. Um, and it'll, it's gonna come back up, and that, that's, that's the case scenario. So in the meantime, we can, you know, use the, the safeguards a little less.
Thank you, Steve. Alright, thanks, Steve. The bidding policy, I, I touched on last week. And so I drafted a policy for five A dash three dash thirty-seven that I'm going to suggest we scrap. Because it's too complicated. What I'm thinking, because the policy, let's say it's not a model of clarity. It's, I mean, the actual code section. So Steve, I think it would probably make more sense to have the opening paragraph as I have it in there, that this is our, our desire is to benefit our local vendors. Uh, but that we will adopt a policy that follows five A three thirty-seven as it's written. That way, every time that a vendor wants it or is asking for a preference being local, then we can look at their situations and apply it to the actual statute. Because the statute's written in a really odd way, because it, it breaks things out by commodities and printing. And commodities and printing, you only get a discount comparable to whatever state is the home state in which they give a discount, so we gotta match the discount. But then, then it breaks into things that are more germane for us, which are motor vehicles, construction, maintenance, equipment, machinery. Then it breaks it out whether you're an individual, whether you're a corporation, if you're four years a resident, whether you have a hundred employees, and then it has either two, two and a half percent, a three and a half percent, or if you combine the two, the five percent. And it, it is quite convoluted.
That's kind of my question.
Yeah.
It's ironic you say that, because I wrote that down, that's, how does that work?
Well, and, and that's the thing, Anne, is it, here's my fear, is what I drafted, if it's not just right, someone's gonna complain, then we'd have to take through legal counsel. Why don't we just incorporate the statute into the policy? And, you know, each vendor that is wanting to, um, take advantage of this statute and our policy, you know, they have to submit that they want to be eligible for this. And then we look at their facts to see if they're eligible or not, just measure to the statute. We can, we can break the statute out. And, and the other thing is, what would concern me is, I don't know how often our legislature tweaks this. So if they tweak it and we weren't incorporating the actual statute and looking at it on a case-by-case basis, the statute may not align to, I mean, a policy may not align to the statute. I'd like to avoid that, because again, some of these projects are big. And so it's real dollars, and so we want to get it right. So I'd rather just incorporate, rather than all, all the language that I have in there as it talks about how we, we use, uh, incorporate our policy, is rather just incorporate the statute itself.
Like incorporate by reference, you know?
Yeah, incorporate by reference.
By reference to, instead of repeating the language.
Yes.
Actually, I, I thought the concept of, of giving our local people a, a local, um, avenue to go around the low bid and to give them an option, I think that's a great idea. I'd like that personally. But again, as you're saying, it's very convoluted in how we could go about doing that and still do what's right according to state statute. So, yeah, I, I like what you're trying to do, Mr. Croft. I think it's a good idea. I don't, I don't have your expertise in finances to figure that out. Now, we might even do that under law, so.
Thank you first. Um, I don't want to invite litigation to this board later.
Yeah.
And, and my fear is, if you have somebody that is within, let's say, four percent, and, and that person believes they would qualify for the five percent, that, that two of them together as is permitted under five A three thirty-seven, and the policy says, no, you don't. But then maybe the statute changed, or there's room for just different construction. That's how we lawyers make a living, is we just read a sentence differently, um, that we're inviting that. If we just say, look, we just incorporate by reference the statute as it's written. And Steve and, and the folks at McKinley will get to know five A three thirty, three thirty-seven very well. Then you can look at those each time that somebody wants avail themselves of that policy. And we can, we can know that we are measuring it to the law, not to how we wrote our policy.
Well, the public needs to understand that if we had our brothers, we would rather use local contractors.
Well, so.
And that's, that goes without saying.
Yeah, and, and that's, I think what Mr. Croft is suggesting is we still would do that, you know, when applicable. But we're just, our policy is gonna look a little different than what was presented, so.
Yes.
The policy will just say, you know, we want the ability to, um, provide a preference for local vendors within the confines of what the statute says and a applicable law.
So what I'd like to do is table it and just rewrite that so everybody has a chance to see it, if that's, you know, okay with the board. It is to adopt the policy to provide preference to local resident vendors. Uh, but also with an eye towards not inviting litigation or confusion. Uh, the, the statute is not, as I said earlier, a model of clarity. I've got it marked up on my machine, and then I, I start to compare that to the policy. And it's too easily, there, there's too much room for reading it differently. And so if we just stayed with the actual statute, I think we'll probably never run.
And then legal counsel could, on a case-by-case basis, also review, you know? We think, you know, Stephen, um, McKinley think, okay, we think this qualifies under the statute for X percentage, um, you know, within this exception, then run by legal counsel and confirm. Because I agree, we don't want to be in a position where we're inviting litigation.
Yeah, I'd like, I mean, we've got board docs on a lot of interesting things that have the statute where it's easily attainable. Because the, the contractors or whomever's availing themselves have to make a written claim for the preference. And I don't want it to be misconstrued that, um, you know, Bennet Contracting throws a bid in and says, well, I'm local, why didn't I get the preference? Well, you didn't make the claim for the preference, which you have to do. So, uh, that, at some point, those that are trying to avail themselves out, they're gonna have to educate themselves on the language of the statute, as will we. So we'll, we'll continue that until the next hearing. Let's put it on an agenda, item for next hearing. I'll rewrite it in a much more succinct way, just incorporate the statute, and the statute will be attached to the policy. Alright, let's move on to bus driver compensation. This is, I mentioned this earlier in my Mon's mission. I've had a couple of bus drivers present a scenario to me that, look, we do our daily job. Uh, but then if we're asked to, uh, provide additional runs, the compensation actually per hour is lowered, uh, when you look at the total day. And so I asked Mr. Bennet to look at that, um, to see, you know, how, explain how that compensation model works. And then what I'm going to suggest is that, uh, no bus driver gets paid any less for doing that additional work to the extent permitted by law.
Uh, yes, just to clarify, this is, this is, correct me if I'm wrong. We are just specifically looking at extracurricular compensation adjustments. So that matches what they're doing in their normal day. It's not per se that they pay raise for one class of our personnel. It's an adjustment of compensation, so it's balanced throughout all of their work.
I, I look at it as not a pay cut for doing those extracurricular runs.
Sure, and, and the way we look at it, well, the way it's been looked at throughout the years is that a bus driver, they have a yearly pay, broken down into a daily, and then an hourly. Well, not everybody's runs last the same amount. So some have, um, six hours, some have six and a half hours, some have seven hours. So then we break it down into their hourly pay. Of course, some have, you could have the, you could get the exact same amount per year. However, your hourly rate is different. Um, so then it gets broke down into the extracurricular trips, as Mr. Croft said. Um, the, the, the minimum you are allowed to pay per state code is one-seventh of, of the pay. So, um, those bus drivers that have a six-hour day, their, their hourly rate is a six of their daily pay. They're actually dropping down a little bit to take a, an extracurricular trip from. Um, it's, I think what Mr. Croft is referring to is nobody, if your hourly rate is a six of your daily or a seventh, you're going to still make that same rate. So I, I think that's, did I explain that correctly? And, you know?
Right, it is.
It's, it's convoluted.
Well, it is, because the extra work seems to have a dilutive effect on their effective hourly rate.
Sure.
Um, David, does that make sense to you, what we're discussing, and you're close to this?
Yeah, and that's, um, that's what the drivers were asking. There are some situations where if they're seven and a quarter or seven and a half, they actually make more per hour for doing a trip. If they're a seven-hour contract, they make the same. But if their contracted hours is less than seven, then they make less per hour to do the trips that are available.
So what I would suggest is that we just don't, we don't pay them less. So there's, there's not a scenario where you get paid less. We're not gonna create an increase, but for those that have, I guess, would be the, uh, lower hours per day that run that risk of, of the additional hours having a dilutive effect, that we would not pay them any less for doing the extracurricular runs. And that would just be an hour, an hourly rate increase to match what they would make during their normal run.
Yes.
So mechanically, Steve, do you see issues of, is, can this be done?
Sure, I mean, anything that we vote on, this would be something that I'd normally bring to you during, um, like the salary schedule and budgeting, um, that would take place in May. So everything would start July one.
Okay, so a, a motion to implement a policy that bus drivers wouldn't be paid less than their average daily hourly rate based on their runs to be effective July one of twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five?
Sure, we can do that, and I'll still add it into the, to the salary schedules and the budget when I bring it up.
So we don't have to vote on anything now? We can prepare that on our end and have that ready for whenever we do the.
That would be, so.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, actually, Mr. Croft put together, uh, and he put together, it was a very nice spreadsheet of the number of, um, trips taken. Uh, we just have last year as an example. Of course, it's gonna vary. I, I think the total would end up being like a twenty thousand dollars. So, yeah, I think it's, it's a reasonable number.
It's reasonable, and I think it's fair to, to do that for those drivers. It's hard enough to get bus drivers, I don't want to create a distance center for them to do their work. Um, alright, so we're not voting on that. What we want to, the consent agenda, uh, other than pay bills, does anybody want anything else pulled? Budget?
Yeah, the budget supplement and transfer.
Okay, so we're gonna pull seven dot two and seven dot three. Molly, you wanna kick off the budget?
Sure, you know, I'm just curious about the, it looks like Education Alliance stimulus schools, WPHS grant for twenty-five thousand dollars, but where did that come from? And what is, why do we, why did we get it?
Oh, it came from Educational Alliance. Um, it was, there was a, it is a, it is a, um, not-for-profit, um, uh, educational meeting. Pushes these types of things out. Um, Doc, or, um, Ms. Taylor went out and wrote a grant and got the money for it. Um, it's, it's gonna provide some, you know, it's gonna, um, uh, also provide training. So, um, yeah, it's a, it's a, it was a nice chunk to get, so.
So that's, it's gonna go towards these, uh, just like teachers on their PL days kind of thing?
Uh, not so much, it's extra training outside of.
Okay.
And that's Dr. Newey of Courts, and she comes and works closely with the High School List and things that we do internally. She also does a lot of work with, um, partners in education, so.
Okay, so this is paying a person to come and do training?
No, this will be, it's through her. I don't know if we've had her come before at a board meeting, but, um, it's just an opportunity for the teachers in the school.
Okay, cool.
Nice. Uh, anything else on the budgets? Anybody else have anything on the supplement transfers? Pay bills, Bernie, you wanna kick us off now?
Sure.
I know you, Molly, have some thoughts.
Again, uh, so I just have the, the check, uh, two-two-two-nine-four-four through nine-two-two-nine-fifty, AT&amp;T bills. So those are really weird low numbers, what?
Yeah, um, it's.
I'd like to.
Let's pay more!
Uh, it, they're, they're, I mean, they're, they're, actually, it's, we still get charged for long-distance calls.
Oh, wow, okay, so have you ever looked at voiceover internet?
We're making long-distance calls, she's gonna.
We get charged for long-distance?
We, we're in the, uh, we're in a transition phase for, for numerous issues. Um, we're end-of-life-ing our phone systems, coming down to an end-of-life. Copper lines are coming down to end-of-life, so we have to make some changes. We, we don't have any set definitive plans yet, but I'm having conversations with people to how to proceed forward.
Okay. That includes our NFL Sunday ticket, right?
No, this is just fun, that we don't, everything's separate.
That is not true.
Can't bundle, we can't bundle for the school system.
Can we call and ask that they don't charge us for long-distance calls?
It's just the way our contracts work, like, we, everything used to be through E-rate, then they weren't. So all of our local services still frontier and all the long distances through AT. It's, it's convoluted for the public's sector of it like that, it's, it's.
And then, uh, two-two-two-nine-eight-eight, Inspire Energy, for thirty-three thousand, I should be right, for all occasions. What is Inspire?
That, that's, that's our, that's our net for gas.
Yeah, okay.
Can I add to that, Bernie, just for a moment?
Absolutely.
Which is, have we, and, or could we, as a board, just look at what savings that's producing? You know, I, I mean, we do that for a reason, because it, it gives us lower utility rates and lower gas bill. And I absolutely take your word that it's a good savings, I know. Um, but I think it would be good for the board to see, you know, what the results of those efforts are.
Yeah, we can, we can request that information.
Great, thank you.
And then, two-two-two-nine-nine-two, Mutual Wholesalers for maintenance wheeling elevator, we, I'm sorry, wheeling middle elevator parts for seventeen hundred and change. But is it, we have something not included on our elevator contract there, our maintenance contract?
What did you say that check number was?
Two-two-two-nine-nine-two.
That was a part that had to be fixed due to the flooding.
Okay.
So it was a lot cheaper for us to go ahead and do it ourselves.
And then, uh, two-two-three-zero-three-five, for Siemens, spare smoke detectors, nine thousand dollars.
Yes, those are additional spare smoke detectors, uh, fire detectors. So that if there's one that we need to replace, we have on hand that we can take care of it.
So it's a hand, a smoke head?
Yeah.
How many of them are there?
Uh, that was for, they worked out to be about a hundred fifty dollars a piece, uh, which is very reasonable with what's out there and what they do for all the schools in our county that have their units, fire panels, Warwood, Warwood Elementary, Warwood Middle, Tridelfia, Bridge Street, uh, Richie Steam, uh, not Steam, or I've yet, so.
So this would just have extras on hand?
Yes, that gives us the ability to fix when we get the calls for the fire department. Fire department comes out, because they have a dirty smoke or a smoke pit isn't working properly, we have to go ahead and take care of, as opposed to asking Siemens to come in and do it and pay more for that.
So, so on our maintenance contract, or smoke heads, obviously not included?
No, this, this doesn't have anything to do with HVAC stuff.
Okay, do we have a contract?
Security and, what's that?
Do we have a fire contract with anybody?
No, not at this point right now. We started to switch over from Simplex, which is quite about, I don't know, a third of our schools are still Simplex, which are coming up on end-of-life. Um, and at the beginning of the bond work, it was decided at that time that they were gonna start moving over into Siemens fire panels. So as each of the bonds went through those schools that needed them at that time, got the Siemens fire panels.
Okay, uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Andy, Andy, do you think I paid bills?
Yes, sir.
Molly?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple. Um, check two-two-two-nine-five-nine, Apple Inc., seven thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. WPHS vocational equipment. What's that for? Any specific equipment? I don't know, just curious what, what that was for?
If I had to guess, I wasn't.
Vocational equipment from Apple?
Directly involved, but the, uh, Melissa Marshall in the Graphic Arts Department, she does all Macs, so we were probably, she probably ended up getting new equipment.
That, that's what it was. It was, it was Mac, five Mac computers, um, for graphic design class.
Okay.
And, and they're all on Perkins funding.
Out of what funding?
Perkins, uh, that's the federal, um, CTE funding.
Oh, great. Thank you. Um, check two-two-two-nine-six-nine to Dinsmore for professional legal services, three thousand dollars, three thousand two hundred sixty-two. It says for ESERC HVAC?
Yeah, so part of, part of, part of having, uh, the ESERC funding pay for, um, the HVAC ads, uh, Woodsdale and Warwood, was that we had to go through CORD and. was that we had to both record and report, um, that the, the amount that we pay. And there was a very long form because it was paid with federal money.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Saunders and I worked to fill that out and then actually the, the state paid for us to use. Um, we got bids to find a legal firm to actually go out and they did the, we did the reporting process, they did the recording process. Um, so, I mean, it was, that was, that particular, particular amounts for the recording process. Um, and like I said, that the state actually paid us, they paid them, so.
So are there other instances where we'll see where this is gonna occur, where we use Escher funds or something in particular and we have to?
No.
Okay.
This, this was.
That's the only one?
Yeah, because they were over a million dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Um, let's see. Check two two three zero two six to Panhandle for steam rod water mitigation.
They had to come in, we had, uh, a streamer head that failed.
Okay. So it's not related to any of that flooding or anything like that that we used to have? Okay.
Simon Short?
Probably won't for that amount of money, but I think that we should. Uh, actually, yeah, that's gonna be probably less than our.
Yeah, five thousand nine hundred fifty-seven. Okay. Um, and then one two six eight, sixty-eight thousand eight hundred for bleachers at Warwood. Says partial payment, just a.
It's a T.
It contains left back.
That's part of the bond work.
Okay. Oh, this is part of the bond work? Okay. And that is the last set of bleachers. Okay.
Good for your, for you to update.
Okay. So, but it comes out of the permanent improvement fund?
Uh, that's, uh, yeah, and it will be seventy-five percent, seventy-seven percent reimbursed by the school building for you, so that's part, yeah.
How much, seventy-seven percent?
Seventy-seven point two five if you're gonna be.
I do like to be precise, thank you. Uh, thank you. That's all I have.
That hit all the ones I had questions on, but with the, the bond work, how much bond money and jobs do we have left at this point?
Not much. Um, we're completely out of the money.
So the bond money's gone?
That's gone. Um, the SBA, we have, um, we're down to two hundred fifty thousand dollars of twenty-seven million to draw down. Um, we have until, look at this, September, we brought it down, right?
And all, all work has to be completed by the end of April. So it's still.
End of April twenty-five?
Yes, we still have the voices and stuff, maybe not after that, but all work has to be completed by.
That'll end the clerk of the work payments and all of that as well?
Not quite because we're still up.
Which is, uh, River, River Park High School?
Correct. Which is, since it's an SBA job, you have to have some huge staff. Um, but other than, I mean, at, at CMTA is finished, um, so that we're just now paying on, on the three S, or ESC loans. Um, the one thing that I can point out on the pay bills was the QZAP loan, uh, is now completely paid off. That is the fifteenth of fifteen payments, uh, from, it was one point eight million from our former art center fifteen years ago.
Oh, that's congratulations.
That's, that's, that, that will not be on next year's payments.
Good.
So.
I think we could request McKinley to put something together to say, here is the funds that came from the public and SBA, and here's what we did with it. We're working on it. Yeah, I think, I think I'd like to be able to report back to the public how we spent the bond money. Because if there's, there will be at some point another bond required. I'd like to say that we followed up and, uh, used those funds responsibly and did what we said we would do.
We'd have met with, um, McKinley and we were gonna follow up maybe, and we'll be able to work out where we are with that when we're ready.
Yeah, maybe they could come and talk to us. They don't come nearly as much when we, when they don't want something, so. No, but they, they did what they said. I think we have some amazing facilities. I think the public's happy. But let's, let's get it out there so that folks can see that. Um, all right, uh, we will put those back in. Uh, Anne, did you have anything on pay bills?
No.
Oh, okay. So, um, any more budgets, transfers? All right, so we'll put all that back into the consent agenda. So consent agenda items seven dot one, seven dot four. I made a motion to accept those, the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Now the second, have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Clearing, none. All those in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. No delegations tonight. Uh, board member comments, Molly?
Uh, I don't have anything further, thank you.
Anne?
I have nothing further.
Andy?
I just had a question. Molly, what, when are we meeting again to do our, uh, uh, starting time meeting review? Did you have a date on that?
It's, yeah, I went out over email. I want to say Tuesday the eighteenth, yeah.
Tuesday the eighteenth?
Yeah, five forty-five.
Here.
Here.
Thank you.
After the parent's time with council meeting, it's also here.
Okay. Uh, Bernie?
Look, I'm good, thank you.
I have nothing else. Future meetings, Thursday, March tenth, twenty twenty-five, a work session at five P M at the board office. Um, and that's gonna be the Siemens contract work session, David?
Yes.
Who's that?
Uh, that is March twentieth, twenty twenty-five. And can we get some material in advance of that meeting so that we can cover the questions we're gonna have?
What kind of?
Well, I mean, yeah, but if it's a work session to deal with contracts, probably the prior contracts and your thoughts on those. So that we can work through the issues that you think merit pulling our thoughts together. The next meeting will be Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, which is the public hearing at five forty-five P M here at the board office, followed by the regular board meeting at six P M, uh, here at the board office. Again, that's March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Then Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting at six P M at the board office. And then Tuesday, April fifteenth, tax day, uh, levy order meeting, eight A M at the board office. They're being known for the business before the board. This meeting is hereby adjourned at six fifty-seven P M.